Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the February 12th, 2025 meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. The first item of business is roll call, which is done electronically, and I will declare a quorum as present. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is followed by a moment of silent reflection. Please rise. Next on our agenda is public hearings, and we have none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda finalizes the proposed actions for the meeting, A, January 22nd, 2025 minutes, and B, list of claims dated February 5th, 2025. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Mullen and second by Mr. Godfrey. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is audience comments. Agenda and non-agenda items. The presiding officer will limit speaking time for non-agenda items to one minute and items noticed on the agenda to five minutes. Ms. Hefter, do we have anyone wishing to speak? We do. All right, we will start with Mr. Jim Thomas, who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6A on dangerous dogs.
Thank you. That was quick. I'm sure you all wondered now what's he want to talk about after addressing this issue, and it's hopefully come into a logical conclusion with it being on as an input item tonight. Just confirm, is it five minutes? You allowed a time? Okay.
Yep.
Again, I want to thank you for having this as an input item tonight. To me and to all of us from our neighborhood, it shows that you've listened to us, that you're taking us seriously, you're taking this issue seriously. Someone did their homework and researched this and came up with this document that it looks like that you're going to amend and talk about in terms of dangerous dogs. So I think it's great. I left a list of questions I have. I don't want to use up all my time going through those. I looked and reviewed the document. There's just three things on there I think are great, are really important. I really like the clause for continuation, i.e. that if he moves, they move, the designation goes with them. They can't run and hide with that dangerous dog. I like the insurance and surety bond provision. Again, by having that in there forces them to talk to their insurance company to declare that they have this dog. There's a lot of dogs that most insurance companies won't allow a homeowner to have that dog in their house with homeowner's insurance. So they're going to have to make a choice. Do I live here or do I keep my dog? So I think that's great. I like the provisions to allow you some leeway for the amount of fines and, in this case, which is currently in the ordinances, the chance for imprisonment. Again, I think that sends a very clear and strong message that the city has taken this issue seriously. After that, what I want to circle back to now, and I don't want to belabor the points, I don't want to be the constant complainer. Again, I spent 28 years in the military. My last 10 years was running and devising operations, both real world and exercise. And where we always failed was in the after-action review, the lessons learned. We're very good at executing plans. We're very poor about learning from our experience. So I'd like to bring up a few points. I think could have happened better, both on the city's part, some on my part. You know, I learned a lot through this process, so please bear with me. Let me start with my initial, and Chief, I'm not beating you up at all. My initial call to the police department is a Saturday evening. We probably waited for about an hour. Again, I was hesitant to use 911. I didn't know because my dog walked away. Had I known later in the fact how serious the injuries were, I probably would have utilized that. So I thought the response was slow. I thought the police officer, who happened to be a canine officer, didn't show a lot of empathy or understanding from us, the victims, or the victim's dog perspective. There was no real questioning of us, the scenario, the situation, the experiences of the dog. What are our options? How do we file a report? What's a stronger report? This is a case we've just been traumatized, so there's not a lot of clear thinking going on. And I found out after the fact it's not a really good opportunity to go back and add to my police report, to add weight to the scenario. So had I known all those things then, I probably would have handled this decision differently. I wish the police officer might have walked me through or allowed me time to think and get out of my period of trauma to address this situation. Again, the officer spent maybe two minutes with me, 10 or 15 minutes with the perpetrator's dog because he's arrogant and loud-mouthed and dominated. So that, again, the perpetrator's story got highlighted way more than our story to get it out there, what happened in our situation. The case in Fond du Lac, on a weekend night holiday, there's no veterinary care. Again, that's not in the city, but head officer or somebody has made more publicly aware that there's no good options for an animal that's been injured to that severity on a time like that, and what to do with them, where to take them, if there's any opportunity to address that. Again, that's not in the city, but it'd be good information, I think we call it. I'll circle back real quick to the document. There was one thing that wasn't in there. Again, I'd like to see provision possibly for a latency of the injuries, i.e. our dog didn't pass away till a week later. We didn't know, the vet didn't know, the extent of her injuries until they started manifesting themselves after four or five days. So again, the opportunity, once you, if you find out your dog dies way after the fact, that would be, again, good back, good to know and add weight to the police report. The term vicious, I think, is already in ordinances and was hesitant to be used by the city. I don't know why, I don't know who makes a designation, what the definition is, but I think had that been used, it would have alleviated a lot of my angst anyways. Lastly, I'll just close with quickly. Tonight, actually, you always, always have the opportunity to make a difference. I know your ordinances are a living, breathing document, but we found out, we know the speed of bureaucracy is very, very painfully slow, and I appreciate that, and you want to make sure you get it right. But this is, again, another opportunity to make it right, to do the right thing, to get it as strong as you can now while you have the chance. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next, we have Joyce Gao, who wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6A, alcohol in parks.
Good evening, Joyce Gao, 63 Hereage Lane, Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. I've read over a little, I don't know exactly what the cleanup is on this, but one of the things that I did notice and consider is the fact that it talked about sporting events in the, in the parks and such. I would like us to somewhat consider the fact that if we do have youth activities, baseballs, soccer, whatever it is, in a park, in one of our parks, that does allow alcohol for different events, that that particular activity does not allow alcohol in it. I've been to a number of youth baseball games and soccer games in other cities where alcohol is still being consumed while the kids are playing and has really raised some havoc with the fans and the parents that are there. So I would just like that as a consideration for the alcohol. And the other thing that isn't in there, because this is not a fermented beverage, but as you may be aware, that we now have some non-alcoholic beverages that can contain some THC in it. And it's being distributed by one of our local distributors. It is available at a couple of the taverns and at one of the grocery stores. It's a real gray area. I've been in contact with the Medical College Law Group to see where we stand on that in the state. So this is just a forewarning that we may be addressing some of that issue too at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brandy Marion, who wishes to speak on homelessness.
I will be speaking on behalf of Brandy tonight because of her experience being homeless. She cannot be here.
Could you just speak in the mic? We're having trouble.
Yep. Brandy has asked me to speak for her tonight because of her experience being homeless. She is unable to be here. So she has written a statement. So she has said that mental health issues, substance abuse, high housing costs, and insufficient support services are what are making it difficult to escape the cycle of homelessness. We need to increase availability of affordable housing and provide comprehensive mental health and addiction services that are more accessible. By understanding and addressing the complexities of homelessness, we work towards creating a society where everyone can have a place to call home. This not only improves the lives of those directly affected, but also strengthens our communities and reduces overall burdens on public systems. Homelessness is a complex and persistent issue that affects hundreds of thousands of people in the United States and hundreds of people in Fond du Lac County. The primary causes of homelessness in the U.S. include economic instability, high-cost housing, mental health issues, and systemic inequalities. Addressing homelessness requires a comprehensive approach that includes increasing housing, expanding supportive services, implementing preventative measures, and enacting improved policy reforms. I only have one sentence left. Addressing homelessness is not just a moral imperative, but also a practical necessity for fostering healthier, more inclusive, and economically stable communities. We can make significant strides in reducing homeless, homelessness if we can address those.
Thank you. Next, we have Jacob Glin, Amy, I'm actually going to ask you, do you have several statements?
This is my last one.
Okay, and then yourself?
It's mine.
Okay, okay. So this is on behalf of Jacob Glinell?
Glinell? Yes.
Also on homelessness.
Yes. He says, hello, my name is Jacob Glinell, and I am a recent member of the homeless population of the Fond du Lac community. I wanted to start my one minute off, your time off, by saying that I find it ironic that the only time I could be offered a voice on this topic is the same time that I have to be checking into the shelter. I have asked that Amy speak on my behalf because attending this meeting would put me in a potentially harmful predicament because of the policies implemented by the city. Attending this meeting would mean sacrificing a bed to sleep in and a shelter which keeps me off of the street, which has now been deemed illegal. I had to choose between advocating for this cause or risk losing my stability and a roof over my head. It is more than evident that a better system and more funding has to be considered for this ever-growing epidemic, and I would have loved for my own voice to be heard addressing this issue, but until something drastically changes, the risk will never outweigh the reward. Thank you for your time, Jacob.
Thank you. And then I have your sheet as well. Did you want to speak on your own behalf? All right. Thank you.
All right. So the main thing I want to say on this is that I'm, I'm to a point now where I'm just, I'm exhausted. I'm tired. I run a human rights activist group. I work with Hope on the Block, and now I work at the Opportunity Center, and this is something that I have committed myself to in every way possible. I advocate for these people on the street. I advocate for them at my job. I am tired of being their voice. So before we have this next meeting discussing this, we need to have you guys going out to them and having conversations with them, hearing their stories, instead of all of us speaking for them, because they need to be the ones that are sharing what their needs are and what things need to be changed in order for them to be self-sufficient. I'm tired of missing time with my kids in order to stand up here and speak at you guys or reach out to people advocating for this all the time. This needs to change, and it starts with meeting with the very people who this is impacting and allowing them a voice.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to apologize if I'm not sure how to, is it Ned or, is it? Okay, I'm sorry, like, would you be able to spell your last name for us, please?
G-U-E-R-R-A, pronounced Guerra, Guerra in English. Never done this before, so it's all new, so if I'm breaking protocol, I apologize. I don't know the proper protocol, but yes, courtesy says I can. This is pretty much a statement question. The homeless situation is not liked, then why not use the $1.5 million that the city has for the opioid to pay for some of that funding to solve the issue? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joseph Schrum, who also wishes to speak on homelessness. I believe we had someone who was going to read his statement as well.
Yeah, I'm reading for Joseph Schrum. I would like everyone to know that I was a law-abiding citizen, a member of society, and that this could happen to anyone. This is a new experience for me, and when I became disabled over a year ago, I got discharged from the hospital and transferred to Fond du Lac. I was tossed on the street, and I lost everything. I never had to deal with anything like this. I've already lost my home and my mobility, and now I'm starting to lose my dignity. Please help me to not lose faith in people too. Thank you.
Thank you. And then are you Sharon? I've got your sheet here too, so if you'd like to speak on your own behalf.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sharon Potite, and I'm homeless due to an accident and from an abusive relationship. And I lost everything. I became depressed and stuck in a rut, and I gave up on myself, and I am a good person who just wants to find my place in the world. Again, okay, who just wants to find my place in the world, again, and be happy. And through the people of AvCap and the Opportunity Center, I'm starting to find hope and the strength to not give up and the reason I'm still alive and that I matter too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Richards, who also wishes to speak on homelessness.
I'm going to say stuff I've said several times before, but what I would hope would come out, and I'm so glad for the committee, the whole structure for people, but could also open it up to the public to have a conversation at some point. But I'm hoping, two things. One is that the city actually takes responsibility along with the county for housing in the city, because you ask who's responsible, and everybody comes up with something about who's responsible. But we are ultimately responsible, and I would hope, as I've said many times, that there be a designated staff person to deal with the issue of housing, which is lacking. And in fact, that this could become a true community development project, which means the city works with the community to develop small homes, like in a habitat model, and we could all take responsibility for putting our friends together, raising some money privately, and making housing get built. I saw somewhere that some houses are being built in four days by volunteers. And also, just quickly, you should know that Ashgosh's little house thing was a dot-com millionaire-funded, and I don't know if we have any of those in Fond du Lac, but we could find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Roseanne Koal? Sorry, Koal? Yep, thank you. Who wishes to speak on homelessness.
Everyone has a story that's homeless, and I've encountered many people since COVID. That's when I started walking the streets of Fond du Lac. But I can tell you with tonight's meeting that the committee of the whole had, I really appreciate your finally opening up that door to say there's a problem here, but how can we fix it? And you're really on a good path, and I appreciate that. I appreciate agencies like AvCap and agencies like St. Vincent de Paul and the shelters that we have, from the warming shelter that Holy Family opened up to the St. Catherine-Drexel Shelter. You know, and Solution Center, again, you know, it's a good place for those that need help, that are escaping domestic violence. But especially, we need the programs that can help those people that are on the fringe to be able to help them escape where they are at that moment in time and become homed and to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charlotte Trotter, who wishes to speak on the unhoused.
Good evening, Charlotte Trotter, Fond du Lac. I wasn't going to speak, but I sat in the meeting before this, and I also sat at the meeting with the library board when we were discussing unhoused people. And I'm truly a data-driven person. I need truth about everything. So as you keep having conversations about this, I hope that the board really, really listens to the professionals that you will be encountering with also with data. And I just want to give a little example, when we were at the library board meeting, and there was all this drama about people don't go to the Fond du Lac Public Library anymore because of the unhoused, and they asked a data question, and the data had not changed. Same amount of people were coming to the library. So that's what I'm talking about. Can we listen to the professionals as we, you know, make decisions also? Thank you.
Thank you. And that is everybody that I had signed up for public comment. Thank you to all of you who shared your thoughts with us tonight. Next, we'll move on to our action items. Action item A is Class B Fermented Malt, limited liability company Annie's Fountain City Catering LLC, agent name Anne Saville, agent address 171 North Butler Street, Fond du Lac, doing business as Annie's Fountain City Catering. Location of premises is 400 University Drive, Fond du Lac, and our introduction is by our city clerk, Ms. Hefter.
Thank you, President Brought. Annie's Fountain City Catering LLC has applied for a Class B Fermented Malt license for at the Fond du Lac County Campus located at 400 University Drive. In a county-owned public facility, a concessionaire designated by resolution of the county board may be issued a Class B liquor license by the Department of Revenue. In order to sell beer, the concessionaire must also obtain the Class B beer license from the city in which the facility is located. Anne Saville, the owner and agent, will be providing onsite catering and has an approved MOU with Fond du Lac County to be their designated concessionaire and has applied for a Class B liquor license with the Department of Revenue. Background checks were done, and city staff and Alcohol License Committee recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hefter? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Item B is Resolution Number 9165, a resolution approving the North Main Corridor Plan and residential and mixed-use development therein, and our introduction is by our city manager, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Brought. And thank you, Arlene, for bringing up that resolution. The point here is to memorialize your conversation from mid-November so that we're not only relying on the minutes of that meeting, but this resolution to guide the vision for the property at the corner of Main and Scott, otherwise known as the Saputo site. And you can see that in the therefore statement, I am, I'm trying to capture the essence of the conversation that you had in mid-November so that we memorialize that as we move forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? I'm not seeing any. I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Schussler and second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Heisler.
Very much, Ms. Brought. Just really quick, I just wanted to kind of tell the council how this came together because I just wanted to, Mr. Moore and I chatted about this in the beginning part of January, and it was just kind of, kind of just move this thing forward. That's kind of, that's kind of the thought process there. I thought that Mr. Schussler did an awesome job bringing this forward back in November. I appreciate that very much, and I just think it's a great way for us to continue down that path because I thought there was a lot of consensus that night. So that's why I encourage this resolution. Thank you for helping to put it together, and I'll be supporting it shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion from council? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Item C is Resolution Number 9166, a final resolution regarding taxable industrial development revenue bond financing for 1125 East Johnson LLC and N6663 Rolling Meadows LLC project. Information with respect to the job impact of the project will be available at the time of consideration, which I believe we had. And our introduction is by our community development director, Ms. Benson.
Thank you, Ms. Brought. You recall during our last engagement that we talked a little bit about industrial revenue bonds. The city really only has a handful of economic development tools, taxing financing, using our own either capital improvement program or operations. An industrial revenue bond is a very unique opportunity where projects that meet very specific standards and requirements under the law can qualify for an industrial revenue bond. And what that is, is that a project is, the loan financing is funded through the revenues generated from that project, and that we serve as a conduit for that borrowing. There is absolutely no liability whatsoever to the city. Everything goes to that borrower. And in this case, the project for a refresher is actually the Johnson Crossing Development, which we know lovingly as Festival Foods. And so for that, it's the project that was for the redevelopment and bringing freighter clinic there, and that was about 37 jobs that were created. And how do we know that there's no liability to the city? There's a whole bunch of attorneys and a whole bunch of attorneys that like finances. And so we know for certainty that absolutely no responsibility will fall on the city for any obligations regarding those bonds. So it's a recommendation of staff that we move forward and process a final resolution for the industrial revenue bonds.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Benson? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Mullen and second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. That ends our action items, so we will move on to the presentation of input items. We have input on ordinance amending numerous chapters of the code of the city of Fond du Lac related to alcohol in city parks, battery, dangerous dogs, digging and excavating in city parks, animal bites, park closing hours, and building and code and zoning. And our introduction is by our city attorney, Ms. Hoffman.
Thank you, President Brought. Yes, it's, oh, a cornucopia tonight to end the night.
A mouthful.
I'm going to go through the memo because it's a little bit more of a succinct summary as opposed to going through each, each one of these bits in the code. The alcohol in the parks, the main goal of that was to allow the patio off the side, our new lovely re-renovated pavilion, alcohol wasn't allowed there. And so if you were having your wedding reception, you wanted your guests to be able to flow out onto the patio, it wasn't allowed. So now it will be. So that's, that's the main reason we brought that forward. We did not have closing hours for Lakeside Park and Lakeside West, so now we will have closing hours of 11:00 p.m. However, the people that fish or the, or the people that have their boats in the marina and perhaps they're staying in their boats in the marina, those are accepted. So they'll still be able to go in and out. We're adding, we, within our code, we adopt a fair amount of state statutes, and we are able to issue municipal citations, which are civil forfeitures, not criminal charges, based on those state statutes. And all we're adding is battery. Generally, a battery is going to be, you know, fairly significant and would not be in municipal court or probably be in district court, but sometimes it, it might be possible where it's a battery charge that's, just doesn't warrant charging through the DA's office, and so this way it wouldn't allow our office to do the charge. So that's why we're adding that. And then we've added, we went back through and have made some recommendations to add some strengthening towards our dangerous dog ordinance and used parts of the EMLA, which is an international, we have Canada's in it, it's International Organization of Municipal Attorneys. We've also have added, there's We've also have added, there's, certain people find it, I mean, I guess it's a hobby, that they do metal detecting in our parks, which is fine, and they would get a permit from the park superintendent. However, we have the burial mounds in Taylor Park, and we also have some closed toxic sites. We do not want them digging in those sites, so we're making it clear that that can't happen there. And we also need to adopt State Code 9521 regarding the bike quarantine program that we've been doing, because it needs to be authorized through the state, and us adopting that. What we've been doing mirrors what's in the statute, but all we're doing is like tying it up with a bow to make it clear so that we can get it approved by the state. And then there are things that will be going to plan commission, and that will come back. When we bring this back to you as in ordinance form, those additional items, those zoning and land use items will also be added. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from council? Ms. Leering.
I'm glad some of these things are being amended, but I think sometimes we have too many ordinances. And the thing about the metal detecting, I understand why we would do that, but let's say you're a person coming to Fond du Lac from out of town, it's the weekend, and you want a metal detect. I don't know. You can't go and get, you can't go and get, you know, a permit. I mean, I understand, like, by the dog park, we have an old garbage disposal site, and we wouldn't want people metal detecting there. Sometimes I just think some of the ordinances prevent normal fun from being had, and some of them prevent small businesses from, you know, we're putting up a lot of barriers, and some of them are silly, but that's just my opinion on this, this one, this one thing out of all the things you mentioned. Otherwise, they make sense.
I wasn't sure if there's a question in there.
My question is, I, do we really have to do that with the, because what are people supposed to do when they come in from out of town and they want to use our park and metal detect, and it's the weekend?
Plan ahead. You know, I'm sorry, but I mean, I do think, it's required under state law that you can't dig in burial grounds, and obviously we can't upend and release toxic waste. So I don't think us requiring them, that's why they need to talk with the park superintendent, because he needs to make sure he tells them, "You can't, not these areas." I mean, and we have a large site in Lakeside Park, just FYI.
I know. I'm a metal detector, and I just, I've never dug up, I mean, you just go down a couple inches, like, I mean, it's...
There's a clay cap in Lakeside Park, seriously. You can't even go down a couple, and the same in McDura Park, there's a clay cap there as well. So, yeah.
I don't know. I just, I just, that was my question, and I see it like taking away some fun.
Well, and if I could just clarify, do we, we already have a permit process for, this is not adding a permit process for the metal detecting, correct?
Correct.
Right, so... Mr. Schussler.
Thank you, Madam President. I contacted Ms. Hoffman about the dog ordinance. I'd like to see that broken out separately, if that be possible. I mean, there's no rush with getting that.
Right, no.
Dog ordinance changes, consider the comments from the neighborhood, and I contacted you about potentially adding a provision for impounding the dog during the course of the proceedings and having a provision where you could still go to court over the nuisance, under our nuisance ordinance, because so often it's the person, like we saw in our case.
Right.
It's the person combined with the animal that creates the problem. So those are, those are just the responses I had to. A good start.
Right. And we, I can, we, Ellen and I have looked through that, and we will bring, certainly can add some of the things you've mentioned. The impoundment, unfortunately, I mean, we already have a problem finding enough places to store dogs, when just the stray dogs that the police, we don't have enough capacity in the area. So I don't know if we can, that part, I'm not certain we can do, but some of the other portions, we certainly can add.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heisler.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this ahead of time, Ms. Hoffman, I appreciate it, and it's nice to kind of run the gamut. If we're going to do it, it's nice to have it all in one big packet, so thank you so much for that. We just, we had a great comment tonight during our public comment, and they were talking about alcohol during certain events, and I was just curious your thoughts on that a little bit, because I'm looking at that going, there are certain events, I mean, obviously there are certain events where, sporting events where alcohol is not allowed elsewhere, and it, that kind of resonated with me a little bit. I don't mean to put you on the spot as part of that, but I, I would, if you can, if you can offer me just a little bit of thought on that, that would be kind of neat, and is there any way for us to kind of adopt a policy similar without being too restrictive to other events? Is it, are we getting in murky water if we do something like that?
I don't want to, like, answer off the top of my head. There's, there's too many events and too many parks and too many sports. I, we'd want to put it all together. I don't want to tell you, "Oh, sure, we can do it," because I'm not sure.
Sure. Okay. I was just, I guess my main question, my main emphasis point would be for athletic tournaments involving youth at parks, would kind of be where my basis for my question would be.
Mr. Heisler, I can give you a summary, though.
That'd be great, thank you.
Not being a lawyer, I'm willing to take that risk.
Thank you, sir.
The city code makes exceptions for Lakeside Park. The norm, though, is you can't have alcohol in a park. And so like over at the ball field that you might see around town in a city park, you wouldn't be allowed to roll up with alcohol there. It's not permitted without special exception. That would have to come before you for that permission.
Got it. That makes a lot, that makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, we've kind of talked about this for months, about, on the domestic, dangerous dogs and domestic animals. I still would like to see some accommodation or, you know, I know if they bite a person, it's one thing, but if it's, if you have a dog that's killing your neighbor's pets, you know, that should ratchet it up a notch. You know, we should, we should be able to go from dangerous dog to vicious dog. And I, I understand your, we've had these discussions for months, and I understand your position on that, but I'd like to discuss it a little more, maybe.
You can bring back more information on that.
All right, thank you.
We've had 187 dog bites, I think, this year, so, you know, and those are generally people bites, and most of those dogs were not declared vicious.
No, I'm talking about specifically, and again, we've kind of gone around the detail on it, and we don't need to do that here, but allowing, providing a mechanism so that a judge could make a determination of a vicious dog when the dog kills a domestic animal. And right now, it's not in there. It's, it's just the, you know, if it bites people. I'm not saying it would be automatic, but, you know, you could give a judge that option.
Okay, I mean, we could do some research on it.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you, President Brought. Just a comment, I just want to thank the neighborhood for your patience throughout all this. Someone said it best tonight, and I think this goes for a lot of things, government moves slow. That's something I've learned in my two terms as a council guy, and that's a good thing, because we want to make sure we're going to get it right. And no matter what we do, we're never going to be able to fill that void left by that dog. But I just want you guys to know, we hear you. I see the emails. You know, sometimes we can't respond. It's not that we don't hear you guys, so I just want to thank you for all the emails and the contacts, and I really hope we can do right by you guys. So I just want you to know that you are heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council at this time? Not seeing any, and I just want to kind of reiterate that if we have other thoughts on any of these, we can let Ms. Hoffman know, and this will come back to us in our next meeting, so we can have further discussion on it. So thank you for all the great discussion. With that, that ends our input items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Mr. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Heisler. This is not debatable. Please proceed to vote.
Aye. Ours is dead. Aye.
That passes unanimously. We are adjourned.